All right. Good evening and welcome to planning board. I'm going to be standing in for the chair who is participating remotely, but has requested that I chair the meeting. We'll open up the planning board at 6:05 with the pledge of allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So I will just repeat for those at home and maybe in the audience that we do have four members. One just standing remotely tonight. We've called the order. Is there any public comment? See anybody raising their hand? No. Okay. So you know public comment. We move right into our public hearings. We have three tonight. We'll start with 494 Electric Avenue, El Forno Site Plan Approval Continued from 6:13.
For the record, Chris Harris with Handy and Engineering here behalf of DNA Lunenburg LLC for a site plan approval for the construction of a new 30 by 50. Auxiliary structure to the El Forno restaurant property over before the board. A few weeks ago, at that point in time, we reviewed the waivers and general layout of the process, parking, traffic, all that kind of stuff. We left it off at, we would provide an updated site plan showing the proposed location of the building so that it was known where we were putting it. So we did provide those additional plans. With that being said, pretty much tired, intense of the projects remained unchanged. From when we last talked. So if there's any questions from the board, be more than happy to answer them.
Yeah. So. Mr. Cole was not present at the previous meeting. So we did grant 14 waivers, I believe, total.
Yeah, that sounds about right.
Anyways, I just wanted to have Mr. Cole weigh in if he had anything to. Discuss.
I did have an opportunity to review the meeting by video and. I certainly appreciate the concerns of the abutter about parking. But I think given the fact that they have no intention to increase the capacity of the building. That they should people move forward.
Excellent. And that was the pretty much the consensus of the body here. We did ask you to just show the proposed building on the site.
Second page is the proposed conditions.
So it's currently a 40 by 50 tent and can be turned to a 30 by 50.
It's 30 by 60. It's going to be reduced down to 30 by 50.
All right. Okay. I had asked for setbacks, but you had gained relief from zoning. So I guess it really doesn't make much difference. At least you were fine enough to add the proposed structure. So this being a public hearing continuation of, is there any additional public comment to do with this? Seeing none. I guess if everybody thinks that we're ready, we can get a motion to close the public hearing.
I would move to close the public hearing for 494 Electric Avenue.
I will second that.
Okay. I want favor of closing public hearing. We have to do a roll call because Mr. Cole's remote. Mrs. Reed.
Hi.
Mr. Brenner.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
An eye for myself. Very good. We have closed the public hearing. Do we have any further discussion? I think it's pretty straightforward. Mr. Cole, any additional input?
No, just in terms of the decision, construction hours, all that. Everything looked in order in the draft decision. So. I didn't know if there was anything else anybody else wanted to add, but it looked like it was in pretty good shape to my view.
It should.
Yes. As the highlight of your points.
Were there any? Anything left to fill in?
Well, you always. I always anticipate construction hours, but it's up to the board to set them. And here we have seven to five Monday through Friday, eight to three. On Saturdays, no Sundays or holidays. Obviously, the board can amend those as necessary. There's a series of conditions that were moved removed from the standard conditions relating to stormwater as that's not a proposal within this. Application. And there were some conditions added at the end, 18, 18 through 21. The inclusion of the silt sack in the first catch basin or catch basins along Electric Ave to the south of the project. The lighting on the walls to be dark sky compliant. The fence to be placed along the property line at 15 Kirby. And the restaurant would not exceed 134 seats per the applicant's statement.
Okay. Excellent. Very good. I think that's. You've got everything that we discussed. Mr. Cole. Oh, you've already said they sounded. Okay. So that's what we went over last meeting. So I guess at this point we'd accept the motion.
I would move to approve the site plan approval for 494 Electric Ave. With the standards and special conditions as listed.
I will second.
Excellent. Any further discussion? All in favor, my roll call. Mr. Reed. Mr. Brenner.
Hi.
Mr. Cole.
Hi.
And an eye for myself. Excellent. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Let's forward.
So it was Mr. Brenner and Ms. Reed. Correct?
Yes, both motions. Good night.
Thank you.
Do we need to wait for you?
No, you can.
Would you like us to?
Uh, no, because you can sign this at the end.
Very good. So next on our agenda is a public hearing for Northfield Road, Holman Street. Stormwater permit continued from 5:23.
All right. Good evening. Brian Marchetti here with McCarty Engineering. Here tonight with Ed McSweeney on behalf of Ron Coiview. On Harbor Classic Homes, we filed this site plan. Application for stormwater permit back in May. We met the first week in June. And there were several comments that the board had. We've gone back. We made changes to the plan to address your comments. The plan has been submitted to Jeff Walsh. He has reviewed the plan and our changes. And he did file a response letter stating that he was okay with all the changes, had no comments, I believe, last week. So I'd like to just go over kind of one by one what the changes were to the site plan. To clarify for everyone. One of the. First comments was we had requested a waiver for the 60% phosphorus removal for lot five. What we did was previously the grading in the driveway. Was in a norly direction back toward the house. So the stormwater runoff from the driveway was draining back toward the wetland to the north. So we revised the grading to have a low point in the midway of the driveway. So now the runoff from the driveway comes back into a rain garden. Where it's treated now and then discharges throughout across the site. So now we no longer need a waiver for the phosphorus. We don't meet the regulation. Jeff Walsh has verified that's the case. The other issue we ran into was. Lot three and four had a common driveway previously, but it did not split the lot line. So the common drive was through the middle of lot three. So we've revised the the property lines now. So that for the first 50 feet, the lot line now splits the driveway. I did show a graphic on the second sheet just so you can see the full extent of the lot line here. So this is the same common drive, the property line splits the lot line. And then it cuts back and around. So both lots now have frontage on the common drive. It meets the land area requirement. And we don't need to cross a wetland or increase any other. Impacts will belong to driveway. It does meet the intent of the. The regulation for common driveways.
Extremely creative and I think.
Creative and it works.
And avoids the wetlands.
Yep.
So did you spend an hour?
So we have an A and R plan that's been filed and we're on the agenda for July 11.
We do have the full submission. It came in today. So it was unable to make tonight's meeting.
Am I assuming that the whole is the same general configuration?
Exactly.
So the stormwater is unchanged.
Nothing changed. It's just a lot line change.
I may add.
I'm sorry, if you might.
I am part owner of this project. The board of health and Griffy basically has commented in the submission for the A and R that. Where the septic system was and well, exactly the same as when he gave us the permit for the two systems.
Well, that's good. That's a question I hadn't thought to ask, but thank you for that information.
And then the, one of the other comments was, came back from the conservation agent. We had shown a wetland line that extended into a drainage ditch. So we showed a buffer zone to a drainage ditch, which really wasn't accurate on the plan. So the drainage ditch is still on the plan, but the wetland line has been showed accurately with their buffer zones. It was field verified with the conservation agent. So what's shown here now on the plan is accurate. So the buffer zone continues. Up here to the north and west. None of our development. Structures, houses, driveways are within the 50 foot mark structure. It's a buffer zone between 50 and 100 impact only. And then the, the last. Comment that the board had issue with was the peak flow rates to the wetland system north of the site. So by. Regrading portions of the site, adding in the rain garden. And then we, like I said before, we modeled the site kind of on a macro level. Because it's a residential, it's not required to meet the preposts and all the stormwater standards. It's required to meet the maximum practical. Typically, we don't add big detention facilities for residential developments because it's not an industrial and commercial sized type of development. So we more micro modeled it. We modeled the actual drainage courses where runoff, she flows offsite. It runs through channels, well and systems, drainage ditches. And the prepost analysis, although it still shows that we do exceed the prepost. For some of the storm events, for the hundred year storm, the accidents was only about a half a CFS. So it's a much smaller impact to the, to the well and system series to the north of the site. So if you want the, the exact numbers. It was. Point 55 CFS. Had no further comments.
So am I, am I presuming that the stormwater systems are contained on each individual lot?
Yeah. So they're contained on each individual lot. We have. Lot A has its own system. Lot one has its own system. Two is, has its own system. Three and four with the common drive. This one is shared. And then lot five is on its own lot.
But each of those, each of the shared systems reside on individual lot.
Yes, they don't split a lot. They're just stormwater runoff from, so in the case of.
Single homeowner theoretically would be responsible for that outside of easement and agreement that is.
Yes. Yes.
So speaking of easement and agreement, is that included in any of the decision whatsoever?
It is not. It certainly can be where the rain gardens are located on individual lots.
We're going to meetings. We also have to ensure that the agreement is, easement is.
I mean, the, the board can do that if they would like to. You're not required to. And I think. I think what. Has happened in the past, and I'll, I'll reference another recent development that was ultimately changed that Mr. Marchetti came in at the end is over on Mulpus and Cross. They were actually designing large detention facilities that were carrying three lots or more. These carry the individual driveways. It would be prudent to probably have a maintenance agreement. But if one were to be. Neglected, it would most likely be the property owner. Where it resides, that would be given enforcement and then it becomes a civil matter between the two. The town wouldn't be able to enforce the easement either way. And the agreement would be in the homeowner's best interest. Again, it's something that can certainly be conditioned.
I'm just looking to make sure that there is enforcement. If it affects homeowners or the town. You know, adjacent.
These. These lots do require permanent conservations in order, conditions will be filed. So again, that's going to be something that's going to be recorded with the regulations as well. Yeah. Keeping maintenance is going to be recorded.
I think. This answers, I think, the questions I had and I heard in general last time.
Mr. Cole, you have, excuse me, anything to input?
Um, I guess I would be a little bit concerned about the rain garden. Lots three and four that is on one lot, but servicing two. As other people have commented on. And I had a question on the common drive, which. I suspect that our engineer reviewed this and. Agrees that it meets the intent of the bylaw of it, but it was always my understanding that it had to. Straddle the lot line for the length of the shared area. But I don't know. I was looking to see what the actual reg says along those lines.
The actual regulation states that it has to split the lots it's serving at its frontage. This is the exact same situation where we've previously got them approved in town on Elm Street. Reservoir Road, the same, exact same orientation setup. So we split it at the frontage. We use the 50 foot minimum. There is no specific minimum. The regulation state just states it needs to split the lot lines at the front.
The only other thing that I do recall it saying is that it, it, if the width is less than 20 feet, it doesn't. Account for the, it doesn't add to the lot area. For access. If you've got an act, if you've got a strip of land that's less than 20 feet wide, that that strip, less than 20 feet doesn't include, can't be added to.
Yeah, I think that's in front of the house. And if it, if it dies below 50 behind the house, it doesn't count to lot area either. So you can't have a lot that diminishes to a point.
Yeah. The minimum lot width, I believe, was 50 feet. There had to be a circle of 50 feet. So we meet that for the full extent, which.
And I think I know our building commissioner has reviewed this. He didn't have any comments on the common driveway in, in viewpoint. And he has signed off on other driveways in. Maybe not quite this unique circumstance or configuration, but having similar characteristics.
Public hearing.
Do we know what the, do we know what the length of the driveway is?
I've written on the plan.
At the 50 foot frontage obviously. As it goes over lot three, that's an additional 128. As you can see, Zach did this. Measured 128 and then there's another 75 basically to the house. But if the house has a two car garage and the driveway coming out, then will be 30 feet. Come back roughly 30 feet and there's another 30 foot turnaround right there.
It should, should be from, from the frontage back to its lot line should be about 180 feet.
So I, it's correct me if I'm mistaken, Adam, but I think that the common driveway only applies to the point they get to the first house.
I think here would be till it hits.
Always private because it's a driveway, not a.
But I mean, it's not a common driveway past the first.
In this instance, it would be because it's on the other lot. I mean, generally it would be an easement from the property line of the furthest house to the street.
Right.
In this instance, there's, I, I would expect that one easement would go from lot four. Is that the one in the back?
This is lot four. Yeah.
Lot four, all the way out to Holman Street. And it would grant access and improvement and maintenance requirements on both properties.
One would hope so, but I don't see it on the plan.
And again, that, that is something that the board has regularly conditioned in decisions. And it would be appropriate for, as there are two common driveways. If you were going to require one easement and you were concerned about the stormwater, that that one easement would cover both the driveway and the pertinent stormwater facilities. I would expect with lot. Five and. Two.
One.
Lot five and one. I don't know where you come up with the other number schemes. That the front. Rain garden would be the only covered by the easement as the rear rain garden is capturing water that's entirely for the driveway from the house on lot five forward. But.
So then there's two. There's an access and there's a drainage.
Well, I, I think on the, in the instance of lot five and one, the access and drainage could be covered together. Because you'd essentially be drawing a line where lot one's access ends and incorporating the rain garden and the driveway. In order to facilitate. Lot one having maintenance requirements over the rain garden and having access over the driveway. And then on lots three and four, it would cover the. Driveway facility and the rain garden for both properties to have maintenance and access rights.
So yeah, I mean, if this A and R is approved, then we approve the stormwater from this and come down to the time when this is all individual lot owners. Lot three could effectively legally build the structure in lot four driveway that's on their property without such.
Correct.
That's the reason it's important. Just for everybody's benefit.
You know, and incorporating into this is also recorded document. So it would just mirror and further support the potential that a title attorney would catch it along with what conservation's recording and it would just kind of. Redundancy isn't necessarily bad in these instances.
I appreciate you going through these steps. And it's unfortunate that this came up kind of a little bit out of place in the hearing process, but.
Makes it clear in the end.
Does anybody have any further discussion? Any board member? Any further input? Mr. Cole, actually, did you get your concerns and comments addressed?
Well, I was looking to see if I could find the actual language just to, so I could get a better understanding of it because I know we've gone over this a couple of times. And there was actually lots on Elm Street that went through this process and. It strikes me as odd that. The bylaw doesn't stipulate a distance or isn't more clear. And I've. It refers to the subdivision regs and I've gone through those regs as well. But I still, I'm not 100% comfortable with the 50 foot split there, so to speak. And it really, it, I'm looking at it as more of a overall picture. Because we've, we've dealt with these situations a few times now and. So I'm just trying to get a better understanding. That's all.
Sure. And I think if I'm not mistaken, Evan's looking for verbiage right now.
Yeah.
The subdivision regs reference section 250 dash 6.4 C4, but when you go to that, it seems to talk more about screening than common driveways. So.
So I, where does it reference this? I'm really kind of fed up with Zoom right now. Where did it reference the subregs?
So in the subdivision regulations, and I tripped over this searching through E code, trying to find the common driveway.
Okay. Well, I mean, the, so the common driveway is 250, 6, 4. 250, 6, 4, C, 5.
Okay. So.
Okay.
So the subdivision regs need to be updated.
Well, no, well, maybe, but I mean, they definitely need to be updated, but not more than two primary dwellings may maintain one common entrance indoor driveway. Said driveway shall be located through the frontage or access strip of both lots equally. Including lots with reduced 50% frontage. Such driveway shall be permitted only after issuance of a building permit and shall relate to the design and construction standards as for subsection C1, 3, and 5G1, which are included in this. Section 64. Such driveway shall not provide potential access to lots not shown on an accepted plan. If such common driveway cannot be located as determined above, a determination may be made by the planning board and building official for other acceptable locations. So I, I think your point is well taken, Mr. Cole. And I think what we're probably learning through this is that this is something the board may want to address through a change to this section of the bylaw and add some more explicit language on what design standards would be acceptable for the construction of such common driveways.
So that was 6.4, number five?
Five K.
Five K. Five K.
I do see, see five K, I'm sorry. It's just above bicycle parking, which is the last section before six five.
And I guess the thing I trip over is said driveway shall be located through the frontage or access strip of both lots equally. Including lots with reduced frontage. In my mind. The access strip for lot four extends from Holman Street to their lot line. Right? And the same thing for lot three. So I guess. It depends on which way you look at it, but in my mind. That strip has to extend further because. Otherwise. The lot in the back. Doesn't have. Access, right? Like, in my mind, your, your access strip has to go from the road. To your lot.
But it does, it does have access and we could come back and permit this driveway has its own driveway. It's a much longer driveway. It's going to cross a wetland. It's a limited project crossing, so it's a permissible driveway.
No, and I'm, I'm not trying to be difficult, Mr. Marchetti. I'm just, I'm looking at the way we've interpreted this in the past. And I think we've interpreted it accurately and I just. I look at that driveway as being the access strip, not the frontage. But the access strip to lot four, meaning you, you don't have. That's the primary way you're going to access lot four is through that strip of land. And so in my mind, that, that common driveway line, that lot line needs to extend to the point where the lot opens up. You see what I'm saying?
I do, I do, but we've, it's deviated from the lot line. On, I mean, multiple other approvals that I myself have brought to this town. It doesn't have to follow the lot line for the full extent. Of the driveway.
Okay.
Like I said.
But, but do you understand what I'm saying in terms of, I look at the driveway to lot four as being your access strip? And the language that, the way I read it, said driveway shall be located through the frontage or access strip. Of both lots equally. So said driveway shall be located through the access strip of both lots equally. In, in my mind, it should go all the way to the edge of the lot, but, um, you know. And again, I'm not trying to be difficult relative to this specific project. I just feel like that's the way we've interpreted it. And past scenarios along these lines and I'm, I'm just trying to be consistent. Um. That's all.
I, I tend to concur, um, with your, with your logic, Derek Tanner, but the, um. My recollection is that, that the clause at the frontage in our bylaw. Implies that it is only at the frontage and that's, I believe, how it's been argued before.
I, I believe that's the position of the building inspector currently with the interpretation that he has had is that it says at the frontage.
Okay.
And thus he has determined that a configuration of this nature meets that clause. Uh, again, which is, and I, I appreciate the effort that this board puts into. Looking at the bylaws and, and understanding the language and, and looking to apply them. Equally amongst all projects, which is why I said, I think if we're running into situations where. There's concern that we're not meeting the language, it's, it's relatively sparse. And there is opportunity to be more particular or more specific about the nature of, of these common driveways. And I feel that often. Common driveway is a center of concern about a development and it potentially being an, a, a vehicle. For development of, of land that, um, some feel isn't appropriate for development. Or adds additional development rights that may not be there without, uh, such a loose interpretation. Uh, so I, I don't. I don't disagree with what you're saying. I think what we're coming up against is the building inspector is the ultimate. Arbiter of zoning before an appeal to the zoning board. And the planning board is, you know, approving plans that ultimately end up at the building inspector's desk too. So if there's a disagreement or a, a varying view, we have the opportunity to clean that up through, through a language correction.
Well, and I, I mean, from my perspective, I don't know that we necessarily need to change the language. I mean, I'd like to see what the building commissioners take on that specific issue would be. Because, um, everyone we've done, as long as I've been on the board, we've always looked at splitting the lot line, the length of. The shared portion of the driveway and the issue that we're trying to avoid is down the road. The owner of lot four has no ability whatsoever to control that driveway. In terms of, you know, if there's work that needs to be done, pavement, maintenance, anything, they don't own it. Um. And, and that's really the intent behind all this is by splitting the lot line, they have, um, greater protections. But, um, you know, I, I think the wording in the bylaw in my mind is pretty clear, but, um. So.
Well, I'll ask for written interpretation from the building inspector for the board's next meeting.
Okay. I, I appreciate that. And again, I'm certainly not trying to be difficult. I just, I appreciate being consistent with projects and I like. We've scrutinized other projects heavily over this issue and now. It seems like people have a, um, a different interpretation of it. Um, so. That's all.
And I think in a case like this, as well as the other driveway, if there is something in your condition that says an, an access and utility easement would be established along it. Then that gives both properties the right to access, use, maintain and improve, you know, that driveway within that. And again, I, I, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with your statement that you haven't approved this before because. The one on Elm Street is exactly the same situation where we, we only follow the lot line for fifty feet and then we deviated from it. Uh, and it's the, the same way on Reservoir Road. Um, with the common drive that we got approved a couple of years ago as well. That it just splits the lot line at Reservoir Road and then it deviates in order to avoid, um, similar situation like this. It's wetland impacts. So we couldn't put the driveway through the no structure zone.
I don't recall the reservoir road one, but I certainly recall Elm Street and there being a utility pole there and.
Yes.
I thought that was modified and maybe, maybe we're just looking at it from different perspectives. I thought it was modified so that the common driveway split the lot line and you didn't need our approval, but perhaps. It split it for a short period of time and, and the building commissioner was okay with it, which.
Yes.
Um, yeah, and he issues the building permits. I'm just looking at it relative to an A and R that you're asking us to approve. And also a stormwater permit and all of this will be in, would all impact. What you would do on the stormwater end of things. Um, so, um, that's all.
And, um, Mr. McSweeney was just telling me, in, in, in all their deeds where they have common driveways. The attorneys do put in this easement language for, uh, you know, the benefit of either lot to be able to use and maintain and improve. So it will be in the deeds.
We have a similar situation going on exactly six and ten, Winston Road in Ashingham. We use attorney Tom Gusterson. So we have verbiage, uh, for the common driveway there for the maintenance and so forth. And I'd be happy to give Adam a copy of it.
Sure. Would that be helpful, Adam?
Sure. If it is just a condition. Applicants are forced.
So we wouldn't, we wouldn't take the full easement verbiage and put it in the decision when we would just reference it.
And conservation also, um, they, they require verbiage in their orders of conditions. That requires the landowners to maintain in perpetuity and that is also recorded.
Okay.
So there, there are multiple levels of protection for these stormwater systems that are now being installed on these residential properties.
Nice. Excuse me, Adam. Are you, are you trying to get the decision verbiage down?
Yeah, I'm writing a condition while you guys talk.
Okay. Um, so I'm pretty sure we're not going to close the hearing tonight.
Okay.
So I don't think it's as important that you get it, but it.
It's in my head. I want to put it down.
Perfect. Okay. I just, I don't want to be working at cross purposes because this plan shows us lot lines that haven't been approved yet. So we can't really say anything about part of this plan because this plan is not effective yet. Correct? Agreed?
That's why you wouldn't close the hearing?
Well, um. I suppose we could close it, but, um, I don't think we'd make any decisions. I mean, we couldn't reference as shown on the plan because the plan is not accurate. Today. Um, it's, but is this holding you get?
Oh, Mr. Chair, were, were we also waiting for, um, words from, from, for, for approval from the building commissioner saying, yes, this. I agree with this assessment of how it works or no. I thought Adam said he was going to look for that for next meeting.
I said I'd get an interpretation on the bylaw.
Oh, okay.
Uh, I mean, you, you certainly, it's within your right to wait for that. Um, this plan. If you were to approve it without that. Uh, and the building commissioner felt that the driveway didn't meet the intent. Or his interpretation of the bylaw, the applicant could seek planning board and building commissioner approval for an alternate location. Uh, for safety or environmental reasons and the, the board could make that decision. Or they could alter the plan and they could modify the special permit. Uh, so either would be an option. And all it does is it delays their start time and it, it creates more work for Mr. Marchetti and, and company. But it wouldn't, it wouldn't mean that something you've done is completely disregarded. It would alter a, a portion of it.
Okay. But didn't you already tell us that he's already looked at this and given verbal consent?
I have not. Yes, he's, he's commented on it and has not said otherwise. Well, I, I'm just saying in the instance that.
Yeah.
I'm providing a, a theoretical.
That specific has not brought up, been brought up to.
Correct.
Okay. Is this going to hold you guys up?
No, I don't think so.
No? Are you confirmed?
Yeah.
Mr. McSweeney?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, public hearing, um, is there any, but Mr. Cole, have, have you thoroughly had your questions and concerns addressed?
I've spoken my piece. Thank you.
Very good. Um, is there any public comment? We, I see three. Mr. Bernie is one of those.
Okay, there's lots of them there, but I think they're waiting on our.
Did you say the A and R is on the July eleventh or?
It is.
Yeah. The eleventh. So you want to continue to July eleventh at six oh five? Um. So. We're not making them continue. We're asking them to continue and they're accepting. Is that how we need to?
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're not under a statutory time limit. It's a, a stormwater permit. There's, they operate in Lunenburg. Equivalent to a special permit, which, once you've opened the hearing and met the statutory sixty day timeline on that. You could have hearings for decades if you so chose.
So also, not to, not legally, not to belabor the point, but the common driveway did say that it cannot be issued by the planning board until building.
Well, you're not issuing an approval on it. You're issuing a stormwater approval on a design that includes a common driveway.
Right.
And the driveway is a, is a permit issued by the building commissioner. So.
Which is what you went through last night.
Correct. Until such time as Mr. McSweeney applies for a building permit from the building commissioner for one of the homes. He can't apply for the driveway permit. So it's all very.
So that needs to come up in our conversation about common driveways that we need to discuss that with the applicants that whatever they decide to move forward with. Been approved is still at their own peril until they get a building permit and then they get.
Correct. And, and, and oftentimes when folks come to see you, they've done several rounds with the building commissioner about. A common driveway and its location and how it accesses the house.
Very good. But, but this is the body that, that issues these approvals and I want to make sure that we're not.
Correct. But you're not issuing any approval on the common driveway. Cause if it, if it meets the bylaw, it's a by right. Use. As, as opposed to some communities which require a special permit for every common driveway.
Okay. So are you request?
I said, Mr. Chair, if, if all we're looking at is stormwater, uh, for the, for the, for this is a stormwater permit, um. I, I guess it's not clear to me why we might not move forward.
Okay. Well, as, as it's been described, we can, I just wanted to be transparent with everybody that's involved. I mean, not only them, but us.
Yes.
Okay.
And I think that your point is well taken that the lot lines depicted on this plan don't exist. So it is not unreasonable to wait for the A and R to be approved, to approve the stormwater in case there is some. Critical failure.
Thank you. So that's the other thing is usually our condition is as, as presented on plan, such and such dated, such and such.
Sure.
All right. Um, but again, the lot line doesn't have anything to do with the storm. So we're just, we're just trying to cross ITs and dot arays, I think.
I mean, cause he can't do anything until he has the, the A and R approval. So approving the two together at least just creates. Continuity.
Very good. Thank you. So are you requesting a continuation till July eleventh?
Yes.
So I would accept the motion.
I would, um, move to accept the continuation of, uh, the North River Road in Holman Street stormwater permit. To July eleventh at six oh five P M.
Excellent.
I will second.
Second. Excellent. Um, any further discussion about extending the hearing, continuing, sorry. You know, all in favor by roll call vote, Ms. Reed?
I.
Mr. Bernard?
Hi.
Mr. Cole?
Hi.
And an I for myself. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate your patience. All right. So we are going to need to read the hearing notice for this because this is the first time we're seeing them. A roll call, please, finally.
So we're ready for the opening.
I believe so.
Okay. The Ludenberg playing board will hold a public hearing on, uh, what's today's date? Do we change the date on it now?
This is a continuation, but.
Yeah.
Continuation.
But you can read it as, as.
Read it as.
Oh, okay. On May twenty third, twenty twenty two, six oh five P M, uh, Town Hall seventeen Main Street, Lunenburg, M A. To hear and review applications for site pan, plan approval and two special permits under chapter two fifty, sections eight point four. Site plan approval for, uh, point fifteen, non-medical marijuana establishments and four point eight floodplain district. Respectively of the code of the town of Lunenburg for an adult use marijuana retail facility at forty three Raphael. Drive Waltham, M A. Oh, nope. At forty three Summer Street, my bad. Uh, applicant, applicant is Uma Flowers, Lunenburg, L L C, one oh nine Raphael Drive, Waltham, M A. Owner is J E L Realty Trust, Aaron E. Donnelly at all trustees, forty three Summer Street, Lunenburg, M A. Materials are available for viewing at the playing board office, nine sixty Mass Ave, Lunenburg, M A.
Thank you. Welcome, finally.
Thank you very much. Um, very happy to be here. Um, Valerio Romano, attorney for Uma Flowers, Lunenburg, L L C. We've been coming in and out of Lunenburg for over a year now, uh, met with the Board of Selectmen, uh, been working closely with the property owner. Uh, who just walked in, um, and really looking forward to keeping this project moving along. We have the host community agreement from the board. And now we're here as described in the, in the public notice. And now we're here as described in the, in the public notice, uh, for site plan approval and special permit. Um, I'm joined by Priyanka Patel, who's the founder of Uma Flowers. Her husband, uh, Yash Patel, who's an advisor with the company. Online, we also have Davis Patel, who's another advisor with the company. We have, here we have Ian Ainsley, our professional engineer from Meisner Bram. We also have Kim Hazaravian online, our traffic engineer. Austin Drake, the architect, and Andy Wilder, our director of security, I believe they're all, they're all present online. So yeah, it's a marijuana retailer at 43 Summer Street. It's sort of an appropriate use, there's currently a tavern there, so it's, you know, it's, uh, it, it seems like it would be a good transition to move that to a cannabis retailer, of course, there'll be no onsite consumption, that's prohibited under your bylaw. Um, under your table of uses, it's described under 250-410, uh, sub four, uh, the marijuana retailer use and the special permit for, uh, marijuana retailers in 250-415. Uh, we are in Zone C commercial, so I believe we comply. It's an allowed use with special permit, uh, from this board, as you know, um, I believe we comply with all the various setback requirements in your bylaw. Our prop, there was a, a small hiccup with a strip of the, of the parcel of the property that we intended to use, there was a confusion as to ownership. That has now been resolved, uh, recently sent Mr. Bernie, uh, a quick claim deed and an email describing the agreement between the parties. So should this permit be issued, if we're awarded by the board, the permit and site plan approval, we will close on both parcels and we'll have them all for ourselves and we'll be able to, uh, implement the site plan that, uh, Mr. Ainsley will, will, will describe to you after I'm almost done here. Um, so I believe we've submitted a, a compliant, uh, application. Uh, we got engineering, uh, comments back and, uh, there seem to be no outstanding issues that I could see in the engineering letter. Um, so if there are any outstanding issues, I'm hoping, uh, that if we can get through the issues tonight, uh, discuss them with the board and we are, because, you know, we'd like to move this project along. If there's anything that still is outstanding, my request would be to make them conditions of the permit, uh, if the board chooses to move that far tonight. Uh, of course, we're here at your pleasure and, uh, appreciate the opportunity to present. With that, uh, I'd like to turn it over to Ian Ainsley from Meisner Bram to, uh, go through the site plan.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see how it goes.
Towards you.
Yeah. You hear me, okay? Okay, uh, good evening, my name is Ian Ainsley, I am the civil site engineer for this project. Um, I flipped the plans to the existing condition sheet, so this is the property as it is now. This is the corner of Summer Street and Young's Road. Um, as Val mentioned, this is Donnelly's Tavern currently. The principal building is about a 4200 square foot building. Um, it's being used as a restaurant tavern right now. There is a secondary accessory building that is being used as a single-family residence that's being rented. Were this project to be approved, that secondary building, the residential use would be discontinued. Um, and we're happy to make that a condition of the approval, but we did note it on the plan as well. So right now this kind of gray shaded area, this is all pavement, impervious area on the property. There's two existing curb cuts on Summer Street. And then there's one kind of long curb cut coming on to Young's Road. Um, so what we're going to do is significantly remove a lot of this pavement, some of which in some of the parking spaces are encroaching into the Summer Street right of way. Um, so I'm just going to flip real quick to the site plan. And you can kind of take the two plans and flip them back and forth to see the difference. But we're removing a significant amount of that paved area, I believe about 9,000 square feet total. Which on a property that's about, you know, with the two parcels, 80,000 square feet, that's, that's a significant amount of area. And what we're trying to do with that is, one, remove the encroachment out to Summer Street. Two, improve the circulation that's there now, so we have, you know, smaller, more compliant, more traditional curb cuts that will allow for, you know, controlled two-way entering and exiting of the property. And they can kind of enter one way and come out the other way, so they don't need to necessarily back up if they come in from Summer Street. And then we're trying to provide, you know, enough parking spaces for the use while also, um, trying to get rid of the pavement for an environmental benefit as well. So I hadn't mentioned yet, but over here kind of to the east, this is, um, a perennial stream for Lula Brook, sometimes shown as Baker Brook on other plans. This stream has a 200-foot riverfront area, so you can see the 100-foot offset right here. The 200-foot right here. We have been to the Conservation Commission once. I don't think they had any significant issues, they did mention that they wanted, um, stormwater inspection reports, which we agreed to do as, as part of their, um, order of conditions as a, as a condition. But from an environmental point of view, the reduction in impervious area is a great thing for them and I think they were happy to see it. Mass DEP, the Department of Environmental Protection, they look at these plans as part of that, um, conservation process. They requested that we kind of restore some of the disturbed area over here that we wouldn't be using, which we agreed to do, so you can kind of see on the plan, we have some plantings over here and the intent is to kind of naturalize that area and, and create more of a buffer to that existing brook than what's there now. Lastly, right now, um, this property flows to the east generally, so from Summer Street it comes down and flows toward the brook. There is a ridge kind of right along here that prevents the existing parking lot from just sheeting off into the brook. So what happens is the water comes over here and gets trapped up against that ridge and then in a large storm, it would fill up and spill over. So what we're doing in conjunction with reducing the pavement is we're putting a infiltration trench right in that area where the water flows now. In an attempt to clean it up, treat it and recharge the groundwater, get it into the ground quicker. Your peer reviewer, Mr. Walsh, did review the stormwater and I don't think he had any comment regarding it. This is technically a redevelopment from a mass DEP, uh, stormwater perspective, um, so we're required to meet the standards to the maximum extent practicable. Although I think we are, as, as a redevelopment that's improving the condition, I believe we're actually meeting them fully. We do show also two handicap spaces right up against the building. Some landscaping, we did include a lighting plan with the, um, some middle as well. And, um, I think those are the big picture items, so, um, if the board has any questions or comments, we'd be happy to answer them.
So I have a question as far as, um, change of use, existing non-conforming. Whatnot, is, is this considered a change of use?
Yes.
Okay. Do they, do they require relief from zone, from ZBA or the existing, I mean?
No, because they're not changing the building.
Okay.
So the exist, the, the structure is pre-existing non-conforming.
Hmm.
They're not altering the structure in that they're not expanding or reducing that pre-existing non-conforming structure, so the structure continues to enjoy its non-conformity.
So footprint remains the same, basically?
Correct. It's an eternal renovation only, yeah.
So then how about the existing dwelling, what, what's the proposed use, is that office space?
We don't have a proposed use for it now, um, so we're going to abandon the use that's there. And should we do anything further in the future, we would come back for a permit for that specifically.
Okay, well, it's, it's commercial parcel, right? All right, anybody else? So did you look at, you've got two entrances and exits, so they're both two-way?
Yep.
Opening.
Yeah, so both curb cuts on Summer Street are two-way and then this one curb cut on Young's Road as well, it's two-way.
Did you look at the potential of making one? So the two on Summer Street specifically, did you look at making one, one way in and one, one way out?
I did look at that, um, you know, my experience is drivers don't like to back up unless they have to. And they certainly don't want to back up, you know, when they're traveling in the, um, you know, not in a parking space, but through the travelway. Um, so nobody likes to get down here, find that they don't have a parking space and then have to turn around and come out. And that is kind of the way that it's set up now with two, two-way, um, curb cuts and I can kind of flip back to the existing. So part of it was we wanted to keep it similar to what's there now, I don't believe there's been any issues out there. Um, you can see the curb cut is wider existing, but there are still two and there's two, um, two directions. So we did look at it, but we thought the two-way would be, um, better circulation.
Yes. No, I, I'm not aware of any recent incidents there either, they consume onsite, so it's probably even better. But, uh, I'm, but the reason I ask is just the, uh, the, the multiple entrances, accidents, and you're definitely improving the situation.
Yeah.
Mr. Cole, do you have any input?
Well, as you expect, concern about the existing building that's going to be discontinued. I guess it'd be, I'd be more comfortable if we had a, um, a better explanation of what the future of that building was, other than being abandoned. Certainly don't like to see abandoned properties. So, but I don't know, I mean, I guess the issue I have is I know when we've approved other projects with and when I say we, the town has approved other projects uh, in the past, sometimes acreage is used as part of the project and then the use changes and it has a negative impact on the rest of the project. Uh, the one that comes to mind is Emerald Place where they put 238 units on two out of the three parcels, abandoned the other parcel and will now use the parcel and eventually exceed the density that our bylaws allow. Here, my concern would be if you abandon the residential use, what's the future use of that property and what would that impact be on the rest of this project?
So I can truthfully say that we don't know what the future use of that will be, there may not be one. I do know that we have excess parking built into our site plan design as it is now, so if you go by your zoning bylaw for a retail facility of this size, 23 parking spaces, I believe, are required. And we're providing 33, so the thought with that, especially where this is, um, you know, an environmental area as well and it would be harder, you know, in the future to come back and, and do more pavement. The intent was to have excess parking so that if that is ever done in the future, the infrastructure would be there to support that, whether it is or isn't expanded upon at that time. So we have 10 extra spaces right now, um, for the dispensary only compared to the zoning.
Now, are you not including the five that are shown for that existing building?
What was the question?
Uh, so you said you have 10 in excess, does that not include, does that include or exclude?
That includes the five, yeah.
It does.
Yeah.
Well, they're not connected. Oh, okay. So, I'm sorry, did you say that, that the five spaces accommodate any retail future use?
Yes, so the, so right now, if you add up the five spaces and all the proposed spaces over here, you end up with 33. Um, and there's 23 required for this only. Now, there's several reasons we did that, one of which is it's always, there's never a bad reason to have more parking generally. Um, but then the thought also was, you know, down the future, if the secondary building is ever used, you know, we wouldn't have to necessarily construct more parking, go through environmental permitting again, et cetera. So these spaces can be used and they're right up against this building, you know, as they are now. So these can certainly be used to access this building as well, so.
Okay, and because it's commercial and not residential, there's, there's no concern about commingling uses and?
No, there, there's nothing in the bylaw that would prevent uh, or require a setback from a commercial use, so if it were a lawyer's office or, um, you know, a clothing store, those would be permissible uses in a commercial zone. Once they voluntarily abandoned the residential use, then the use would not be, uh, residential use is not permissible in a commercial zone by right or, or by special permit. The challenge would be the special permit or the, the Summer Street overlay district. But should they look to use the mixed-use provisions of that, that becomes a change of use on this building and the board could tell them that they can't do that because it would violate zoning, having the residential use within that distance to, um, the marijuana retailer or the cannabis retailer, however.
Sure. Okay, so it goes both ways.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess that would be an interpretation, it says from an existing residential district or zone. But one would infer that if you're preventing it from an existing, then coming to build new residential on the same site would, after having voluntarily abandoned it, would be per form.
Isn't it, isn't, isn't it the case that we're not allowing residential in commercial district period?
We are, but they're also within the Summer Street overlay. Now, the, my feeling on that would be they've chosen to exercise their rights on the parcel under the underlying zoning as a commercial district and they can't pick and choose and come back uh, for another bite at the apple under a different zoning configuration.
Exactly, so, I mean, it, it's said that it's voluntarily discontinued, but effectively it's.
Well, once they abandon the, the, the pre-existing non-conforming use disappears, the, any section six protection that they enjoyed under 40A vanishes upon voluntary secession of the use.
Okay.
Okay.
But I mean, they're not applying under the Summer Street.
That's correct. And, and you know, yes.
Could not have that.
That's correct.
Okay.
And I've had numerous conversations about this same issue with both Mr. Romano and Ms. Ainsley and I, I think we're all on the same page, I, I haven't spoken with the, the owners directly, but um, I feel comfortable that both people I've had conversations with have had these conversations with the owners and everybody is, is of an understanding. Yeah, we, we came to terms a long time ago, but this would no longer be a residential use now or in the future at any point for a variety of reasons, so.
I, I bring this up only because of Stone Farm package, do it.
There's always a precedent out there, right?
There's a precedent. And that was a negative precedent in my mind, but regardless, um, anybody else have any comments, concerns, questions? Mr. Cole, anything else?
I guess I, and I don't have my full packet because I'm participating remotely, so I do apologize, but have we gotten all the special permit documents in terms of like the security plan and?
So we have. Uh, what, we don't have the formal nuts and bolts security plan for the building. Uh, and that was by design as we discussed when we created it. They have met with the chief of police and his lieutenant. I have a letter from the chief indicating that he is thoroughly, uh, pleased with the security plan as it was outlined. I've had a personal conversation with him and he said he wishes that they would come and do the security his station the same way. Uh, so I, I think, um, from, from that perspective, the security is covered, we do have the general security plan for the facility, which outlines what I think these folks would tell most people, um, is how they do security, uh, and. Um, is how they do security, uh, and should give the board enough confidence that you, you know, don't need to enter the the nuts and bolts into public record in a way that would potentially jeopardize the security.
Which was part of the snafu right in the rigs.
Correct.
Yeah. And I think we, at the end of the day, settled upon.
Uh, the letter from the chief.
I can answer some. My name's Andy Wilder. I can answer some for this, uh, security because I've done multiple um, dispensaries and cultivations if you want me to, but if you don't, that's, that's up to you.
Mr. Cole?
Well, it'd certainly be helpful to, you know, get a better understanding of how they're going to conduct business. That's for sure. Um, one of the things that I was a little bit concerned about, and I think it's less of an issue now, but, um, when we were under all the COVID restrictions, there were other retailers in the area that would queue people outside. And so that in my mind becomes a little bit of a safety issue, having people stand in line outside in parking lots. Um, just in terms of vehicles moving around and people standing in the parking area. Um, nothing to do with cannabis or marijuana. Um, so yeah, any information you can provide would be, uh, much appreciated.
Well, what I can provide is that this building on the inside and, and on the outside is, uh, 95 to 98% covered with cameras. Uh, the other two or three percent is bathrooms. Of course you don't have any cameras in bathrooms. So we are going to cover, uh, all the outside parking, the entrances to even Young Road, Young's Road. And of course, Summer Street, uh, with cameras, uh, that are going to be on the corners of the building. They're also gonna, um, I am going to cover the entrances and exits of the building, both inside and outside. All the rooms inside, and this is where it doesn't, you know, you, you presented a plan to the police department, which I sat in with, with, uh, the owners and the representatives, lawyers, uh, well, with the everybody, we, we sat and we went over this. And according to the, um, CCC Massachusetts regulations, we have not only, um, supplied a design to meet that, but exceed that to make sure that the authorities and the, uh, Lunenburg public would, uh, be covered. Uh, and that is, uh, make sure we have the video recording, uh, all the angles and then the inside when, uh, of the, not only the public, uh, the, uh, you know, people visiting, but the workers also are, uh, not only, uh, videoed, uh, recorded, and of course it's up to 90 days. There's also access control in this building, which keeps the employees uh, from, they can go into many areas of the building, of course, all the areas of the building, but the, uh, public who are, uh, coming into this building can only go in certain areas that uh, the retail and where they're, you know, uh, looking at, uh, the cannabis and then purchasing the cannabis. And then there of course, go out the exits and back to their cars. So there's access control to keep those, to keep both people, the employees and the, uh, um, people purchasing the cannabis, you know, in their proper areas. There's also of course after hours intrusion, uh, that, uh, you know, protects the building. Um, we are going to give the police department, uh, most of access to the video, not some of the internal vault rooms and things where they don't need that area, but they can have the outside cameras and some of the internal retail. Um, you know, in the entrances and exits of this building. So that when, if there's an incident, the Lunenburg Police Department can see, uh, what is going on real time uh, during a call. And they can then, um, adjust how they're entering or exiting and, and, and be aware of what they're entering. So that is, uh, what we're going to provide the Lunenburg Police Department. Um, all these cameras have, you know, great visibility, clear, they're all IR. And, uh, it's according to the, um, um, regulations. Okay?
Um, may I through the chair, if I could add a couple more little bits, uh, so, uh, for, for Mr. Cole, so particularly because this is, uh, an adult use or non, uh, non-medical retail establishment. Uh, one of the things that there's a governor's order during COVID and they allowed, uh, pickup, uh, on, uh, pickup from the street as opposed to coming into these buildings. Uh, that was not extended for adult use establishments. So that doesn't even happen anymore specifically for your question. So, uh, we feel like the size of our place is big enough for the queuing to be inside. So that's not going to be an issue anymore. Like some of this, some of these places were, uh, during the, the height of COVID. Another thing is, uh, Uma Flowers opened in Pepperell, uh, at the beginning of December of last year, and they have had no security issues, no problems with law enforcement too. So I thought I'd add that too. We have joined by Priyanka, who's the founder and is there almost every day. So, um, I think we're pretty well covered from, from the security standpoint. Frankly, the Cannabis Control Commission, that's basically what they do is security. So they, you know, on top of your police department, their, their main goal and role is to make sure these places are incredibly secured. Everybody who works there is basically former law enforcement. Um, so, uh, we feel confident that we will satisfy that issue.
Mr. Cole, anything else?
Uh, what are the intended hours of operation?
Thank you, Mr. Cole. So, uh, 10 to nine, uh, Monday through Thursday, 10 to 10 Friday and Saturday and 10 to six on Sunday. It's the same hours. Excuse me, that our facility operates in Pepperell.
Mr. Cole?
Uh, that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you. So as far as the site plane review, I'd more comments for the engineer, if you don't mind. So the, the drive aisle, actually it's a question for Adam. The drive aisle shown, um, is 22 feet wide. Is that, is that adequate for our by, per our bylaw for?
Yes, I believe 20 is our minimum or yeah, our minimum for, uh, what for two-way.
Used to be this weird calculation, 300 square.
Yeah, we don't do that anymore.
Right.
We have, we have stall sizes and drive aisle sizes.
So I'm looking at, um, section 250 64. Um, the aisle width is dependent on the angle of the parking spaces and, um, whether it's one-way or two-way. Um, it looks like the maneuvering aisle width for 90 degrees, which would be, you know, this 90 degrees to parallel parking. Um, it's 22 feet, which is what we had. So.
Yeah.
By design.
Very good. Very good. Thank you. Um, the fire chief, has the fire chief weighed in?
Uh, I do not recall receiving a specific comment from the fire chief, but I can.
Have you? Yes. So the fire chief, I had, we, we met actually, I wasn't part of that meeting, but I know Priyanka and the Uma team met specifically with the fire chief. There were no outstanding issues. The one thing the fire chief wanted was to make sure we had a Knox box, um, which we will of course provide a Knox box. Um, and if it gets opened or something, we're going to get an alarm. It's going to give me an alarm Knox box and the, and the chief, both chiefs will have access to keys to the facility. So they can go in whenever they want, even if, even in off hours.
Okay.
That was the main comment, right?
The only comment he has.
Yeah. Yeah.
Cause I know, I know in past they, they wanted access to the majority of the the exterior of the building and they've got it, but there's not a, a clear path through. So it was going to beg the question is, is would it benefit everybody involved to have the?
I think they'll be okay. I don't even know that in an instance like this, they'd pull into that parking lot on the rear of the building. Uh, they'd probably just park on Young's Road and
Sure.
and access it from there because it's close enough to, to the road.
And there's a hydrant right in front. Perfect.
Mr. Chair, I had two other, um, questions. One was signage. I don't know if we need to review and approve any signs like square footage wise, if they're by right affixed to the building, uh, freestanding, whatever. Um, and then the other question I had was, you know, this is our first, uh, marijuana retail establishment. And I don't understand the business model enough to really have a good understanding of how it works, but there doesn't seem to be like a receiving area. And so I'm just kind of questioning the layout here. It looks to me like the customers are parking in the same parking lot that their deliveries are coming in, but I would assume they're getting their deliveries when they're not open. I, I don't know. And I would imagine some of that's part of the security plan, but if they could kind of go over how the operation works and which area of the facility they intend to use for receiving and, um, that would be helpful.
So I can answer some of the signage question at least. Um, there is an existing freestanding sign right outside the building along Summer Street. Um, that reads, I believe Donnelly's Tavern right now. That existing sign would be modified to read, um, Uma Flowers. So it would be the same sign, same size.
Um, does that sign illuminated currently?
That sign is illuminated.
Um, same structure, just a refacing.
Yeah. So basically you're refacing of that existing sign.
I guess the question follow-up on that was, does that meet the current sign by?
Again, we're in a pre-existing non-conforming situation and the, the, as long as they're not altering the sign.
Change of use though, no? Uh, sign is structured.
The sign's a structure.
Okay.
And so again, re-refacing of the sign is a permissible use for a pre-existing non-conforming sign within the sign bylaw.
I will not belabor the sign issue then if, if the board satisfied with the responses or the, the detail on that, but we do have, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, for that particular sign, I think, I think we're good.
Okay. Um, and then through the chair, I also online, we have our architect. And so he could talk a little bit about the floor plan. I heard, I think Mr. Cole had some, you know, an inquiry about how we're going to do receiving. Um, I can tell you before our architects chimes in, some of these are in like office building walk-ups, like in downtown Boston, like you just, it's one of Iowa, I permitted one in Harvard Square, which I always thought was really interesting. There isn't even any parking hardly to take deliveries. So the Cannabis Control Commission is just sort of the way is this building actually works really well. And I'll let the architect uh, speak to how these deliveries are going to work. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. Hey, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, Ken. Great. Um, yeah. So I think, uh, typically like the way we kind of set up the, the spaces, um, we have the entry and exit, um, that is could be mainly for customers. Um, what we're trying to do is in the back left side. So if you're more towards the grid line, we have that door. Um, so the idea is that the vault is kind of self of that. Um, so deliveries would come in through that hallway. Um, they would be counted and checked and then be brought into the vault from there. Um, the, I have worked on other dispensary spaces that don't have, uh, a door similar to this where it just run everything through the, um, the entry and exit typically. Um, there's the CCC doesn't have any problems with that. Um, but we did design this space to make sure that that hallway had that door. Um, and made sure that the, it's kind of separate just so, um, it's, it's, it's easier for the processing uh, process for lack of better term.
Thank you.
Regulation wise, you know, delivery vehicles have to have two people in them. They have to plan a manifest ahead of time. If they deviate from that manifest, they have to report themselves. They have to have GPS monitoring. There's a camera in the vehicle. One delivery shows up, they have to actually have be, have somebody be escorted by a security agent that's, uh, present on the Uma site while the delivery is happening. Um, so there is, you know, a really sort of, uh, again, the Cannabis Control Commission is extremely thorough when it comes to security and uh, your chief, uh, believes in our security plan. So I think, and they've been doing this in Pepperell for a while and many of my clients, uh, this is all I do. Uh, have been taking deliveries without incident for years now. So I think based on the fact that we're going to really comply with and exceed the regulations are, we have a separate entrance. Um, and these guys know what they're doing and your chief signed off. I, I hope that, uh, delivery, uh, is satisfactory.
Okay. Now, since you're, you're applying for retail rather than the transport, I assume that this business will contract with a transport company that's approved by CCC?
Yeah. So the different license types allow, uh, you'd actually have your own delivery vehicle. Currently Uma does not have their own delivery vehicle, but the cultivator, uh, or the product manufacturer license type may or may not have their own delivery vehicle. Some are sophisticated enough where they do. And then there's also a third-party transporter, uh, licenses, uh, that do deliveries just in between. So all of them are going to be approved by the CCC. All the vehicles are inspected. All the agents are background checked. The cameras are checked in the vehicles. The GPS is all checked. Um, and all the delivery staff, like I said, are background checked as well. So, but it's not only the third-party transporter license type. The, the other license types also come with the ability to do deliveries and some of them do, and some of them use a third party.
Third party is what I was thinking of. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah.
Now, did we have any kind of a specific regulation for like a Sally port or anything specific to?
I, I don't believe, there isn't one included. It says it need, they need to meet the CCC regulations.
But again, Austin, if you'd like to point out the Sally port, we definitely have a man trap area that people come in and their IDs are checked. So Austin, if you'd like to point that out.
But a human Sally port, I think, I think what he was asking about is a, a vehicle Sally port for deliveries, which I know some communities have required where the delivery vehicle can actually pull into the building being closed, do its unloading.
Okay.
But apparently we didn't include that. Which I, I guess.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
Um, it, it, my questions regarding like receiving was not so much a, from a security perspective, it was more of a pedestrian traffic. And, you know, I don't know what size trucks they use and a lot of times we'll see loading docks and, um, those types of areas incorporated in retail establishments, but, um, certainly happy to see that they have a very detailed process for receiving product. On the plan we're looking at now, it says not in project scope. So I assume that's a portion of the building as it exists, that's inside the building, but isn't included with this use?
Correct. Um, so it's a 4,200 square foot building and the dispensary would be about 2,900 square feet of that building. Um, the rest of it would remain vacant.
Okay. And I would, I'm assuming that your parking calculations are based on the 2,900 square feet. And so this additional 12 or 1,300 square is not included in that. Is that correct?
Correct. Yep. And you can see that on the table on that sheet. Um, it's one space per 200 square feet, 2907 square feet. You wind up with 22.5 and you round up to 23. Um, so the intention, you know, with that extra parking that I had mentioned earlier, would not just be for that secondary building. It would be if they ever were to put another type of, um, commercial um, use in that same principal building as well, a separate business. Um, we don't know whether we're going to do that and what that would look like, but the parking is built in to support that if that were to happen in the future. And I believe that would be a same, uh, scenario where we would have to come back in for permitting that separately. It's part of that process.
And I, I guess my question there is, I feel like depending on how that shapes up now, we're kind of going down the path of a strip hall and so on. Um, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't know. That makes me a little bit uncomfortable. Trying to issue a special permit and a site plan approval for a project that uh, now has two areas that do not have defined uses.
Well, um, in my experience, you know, oftentimes commercial buildings don't quite know, you know, what every tenant is going to be in the future. Um, and they do the best to, you know, figure out the parking based on the expected uses and tenants change. You know, you can have a tenant in a multi, multi-use building that's a hair salon and they change to, I don't know, a restaurant or something like that. And then they have to come in and get the change of use permitting for that. Um, and, and again, we would come back in the future, you know, for either of those two spaces. And if the board, you know, didn't want to, if they were not inclined to grant them, then we, we wouldn't get them, uh, because the board wouldn't grant it. Um, so I do feel like, you know, by approving the dispensary specifically, it's, it's not a approval of, you know, further um, businesses on the property in the future. That would be a separate, you know, step where the board would have, you know, could make the determination on whether they wanted to do that or not.
Um, so Adam, the, um, the regulations that we wrote didn't say anything about a standalone building. I mean, obviously we had
It did not.
Had a previous applicant.
We had a previous applicant and we've had, you know, other applicants looking at, um, being a part of a shopping center.
So I know that when, when this is kind of unrelated, but it's an analogy. Um, when, with, when it comes to Title V and you, you've got a house and you want to send it and you need the twenty foot setback from the system and, and a three to one grade down.
Mm hmm.
So if you don't have that twenty foot setback, what they make you do is fill in your basement with concrete. So you can't utilize that area. I know that's not even close to practicable for this, but it brings up a good point that, um, well, it, again, it wasn't the greatest of analogies. That's for health reasons, but the permit that we would be looking at granting here is, is, is permitting for an existing nonconforming structure with two undetermined, undefined, uh, unknown apparently at this point, uses. Can we, can we, if, if we're gonna, if we're gonna look at this project on its merits by itself in a commercial district under the commercial zoning, can we require that any future development be under the, uh, the hard zoning rather than the overload? Because
Yes. I mean, they, they've already availed themselves of permitting under the commercial district.
But I mean, that's for this. But then once this is signed off.
But you can't pick and choose on the lot.
No, but the lot can pick and choose how they apply.
Well, I, I think that in the instance that the board chooses to approve this. And when I say chooses to approve this, uh, this special permit. And in approving the special permits, because there's the floodplain special permit, the board determines that they've met those criteria and they move on to the approval of the site plan. And they begin conditioning said site plan using the standard conditions that we have and applying special conditions. Conditioning that future developments return for permitting as this approval is restricted to the cannabis retail establishment only. And, uh, noting that said cannabis retail establishment was permitted under the commercial zoning district as determined would provide information to future boards to appropriately assess future applications that they be made under that same zoning district.
But they couldn't require it and we can't condition it?
I think you can, can, oh, well, I I think by noting it, you're conditioning it.
Okay.
And, and I think that, you know, we're, we would probably need to cautiously craft it to be legal. Um, I have applicants sitting in front of us. I have an attorney in the room who is going to advise these applicants. And quite frankly, as long as there isn't an appeal filed on the approval, the condition stands, even if it's tenuously legal. Um, I, I think conditioning future expansions to modify the site plan approval is completely legal. I think adding a note of the circumstances of application is legal. Um, I'm unsure about requiring how future applications are submitted. Um, it's, it's right on that line that I don't want to say, yeah, go ahead for it. But also I'm not going to say, yeah, there's no way you can do it. Uh, so I think that there's ways to craft it in which, uh, the applicant won't be in peril and the board will, the board and future boards will have information necessary to make appropriate decisions.
Okay. And, and not, not to, to, not that it's negative. I, I think that mixed use would be, uh, very applicable and appropriate for the site, but not for this proposed use. Simply because I was around when it went to the vote and the town is very split and there was a lot of contention. Um, and we're here to look out for the best interest of the town and residents. Um, so I just wanted to bring that up and, and make it clearly identified and known. So what further are we, uh, should we go over tonight?
Mister Chair, if I may, I, if we could go back to the other view of this plan that shows like the building envelope. I just, I had a question about the not in. Okay. So I think my math tells me that even if they take this space that's not in the proposed scope and they use the entire forty two hundred square feet of the building, they still have enough parking. They probably don't have enough for to include this and the building at the rear of the property. But I came up with they would need roughly twenty nine spaces and they have thirty three. Um, I guess my concern about this area in particular is our bylaw says that all shipping and receiving areas shall be for the exclusive use of the marijuana establishment. And I don't know if these openings, like is this a completely separate space? Is it separated by a solid wall or are there doorways? Like what are the openings between the area that's not in the scope and the marijuana retail establishment?
Uh, through the chair, if I could answer, Mr. Cole. So
Please do.
Um, our security plan, uh, first of all, the, the regulations and the requirements for the Cannabis Control Commission require us to completely segregate uh, and secure our portion. So it's not like in a few years' time, if we come up with some idea of what that other spot might work and it seems like it's, it, it, it works with jives well with, with the cannabis retail use and we come back before the board and we get an approval, like somebody will be able to go back and forth between those two locations. Uh, that, that can't happen, uh, because of the, the regulations and the security plan that we submitted to your police chief. So it's not like that other part is just going to be some sort of extra way of getting into our facility.
Okay. I, I guess my simple question was, what are the openings that are shown on the plan? I mean, I, I take your word for it and I'm sure that the police chief wouldn't approve a plan that allowed a vacant space next door to simply walk into your establishment, but I guess.
I can speak to this.
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. So it, it's a more of a representational problem. So these openings are actually, uh, new walls proposed, closing openings. So, uh, they, uh, there were some doors previously and some, uh, basically some pass through windows. Um, but the plan, the ideas that were showing new walls proposed there. So, um, the, the two, the two spaces are completely sealed from each other.
Okay. Thank you.
So it, it's been a long time since I've been in that building, but it, isn't that just basically the bar area that's not being used? So the other portions with the kitchen and the, uh, the eating area, the, the restaurant area.
That's correct.
I don't believe in that anymore. Um, so how far are we expected to get tonight with this?
As far as you want to get.
We haven't asked for public comment yet. Is there any public with us?
I see folks on there. I don't see anybody with a hand up.
If anybody has any public comment on the matter before us, this, uh, marijuana retail establishment, um, please raise your hand so we can ask you to speak.
I think most of the folks here are, oh, someone just turned their mic on. I, I'm sorry. We're having a hard time hearing you. Can you restate your name?
That's not, not until, I can't, we can't understand at all what's being said.
Are you on a phone or a computer, ma'am? And we're having, we're, we're getting a lot of feedback and static.
There's nothing that anybody, uh, on the techie side can do about that?
You could try turning your speakers off while you speak. Yeah, you could also call in, uh, the phone number. Uh, the phone number is eight, 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 four, seven, five, four, four, nine, nine. And the meeting ID, tell me when you're ready. Eight, eight, six, eight, nine, nine, seven, three, four, eight, four.
Very good. Thank you. And just let us know if there's any action there.
Yeah.
Where did you folks hope to get tonight?
So, I mean, I think I would get severely chewed out if I didn't tell you that, uh, we were hoping for, um, the permit to be issued and site plan to be approved. And if there are remaining issues to make, uh, them conditions of the permit. Um, which, you know, it sounds like a condition that's going to be artfully crafted is going to be, you know, if, if we want to put another use on that parcel, uh, that we're going to have to come back before the board and get that approved. Um, I don't know how many other outstanding issues we really had. I mean, as far as those two vacant, I, I, I sort of, I get conceptually the concern, although I think like Ian said, you know, you put in a commercial use without always knowing what every other commercial use nearby will be. Um, but we really had to abandon the residential use. Otherwise we were within the two hundred and fifty feet. We just simply couldn't do the project here. Uh, before deciding on this property and Mr. Donnelly would, we'd actually looked at other properties, uh, in town, and this is the one that works. Um, so, but with the caveat that we had to abandon that, uh, that residential use. So that's sort of why that's just just happening definitively. So, but to me, just from, for taking notes and thinking about so far the, the hearing, that seems to be the, the remaining outstanding issue until maybe we hear something else from the public. So I would, we'd love to keep the project moving forward, um, and make that a condition. And that way we can, you know, finish closing on these properties. And if you really, just to reiterate, reiterate one thing, we're greatly improving the property by creating far less impervious structure. Uh, we're, you know, cleaning up a, a, around the waterway. Um, so this is, this is a boon for the property as well. Um, so that's why we're hoping we can get started doing it all. So that's what we're hoping to get through a long way around.
Very good. I ask, I ask.
Uh, I believe our resident has joined us. I will note for Mr. Rum Romano's, uh, or Attorney Romano's, uh, information and, and just to remind the board that generally the way these hearings have worked with the board over the past few years is when they're ready to make a decision, they won't necessarily vote that evening. They'll instruct me to draft a decision. I'll come back with the decision with the conditions. They may close the hearing, they may not. Uh, and they'll deliberate at the next meeting in order to not be in a place where we're trying to negotiate and rewrite conditions outside of a hearing or outside of a deliberation. And that way I have the opportunity to craft a decision. They have the opportunity to review those conditions and decision and still be able to comment and discuss them without running foul of any open meeting or, or other laws. So even it, you know, and I don't, I, I don't want to pretend to know where, where the board is, but if they felt that they were ready, um, it would probably be the eleventh of July before there was an, uh, approval issued just based on that normal process, because that would be our next meeting.
I understand. And of course, Mr. Bernie, we're, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll follow anyway. Obviously.
Sure. And, and yeah, and I don't think that you would be upset. I just want you to understand what the, the process is.
Okay. I understand. Thank you.
Excellent. Well, no, I, Adam, I appreciate you, um, summarizing that. It seems pretty accurate.
Are you back with us, ma'am?
She's still muted?
She is. You are muted on the phone. There you are.
Okay. Sorry. Uh, Linda Moran, one fifty one Young's Road. Um, I, my only questions, I guess, on this are the original proposal, as far as I knew, was going to be, this was all going to be an adult marijuana retail place. And now all of a sudden we have a possible, though not decided at yet, as of yet, additional commercial spaces in two areas. One in the actual building that I thought was all going to be the medical, I'm sorry, the marijuana um, area. And now the possibility that the resident that is being abandoned might also at some point in the future be used commercially. Now I understand that, um, everything would have to come back to the board for, um, approvals if they did decide to do anything, but this already seems like a whole different project than what they originally came to the town with.
Okay. Well, thank you for your input. Um, so the, the abandon, the abandonment is just the use, the, the residential use of the existing building. And, and not speaking for the applicant, but speaking from my understanding of existing nonconforming structures, if they were to demolish it, they could not rebuild it in the same footprint. But by
I understand that.
By abandoning the use, they can still reuse the existing footprint for continued commercial use. If, if I spoke correctly, if I misspoke, please correct me. But
Yeah, I think that's, that's right. But I've been, as Ian said, we honestly have no clue what we might put in either of these other locations. We had to abandon the residential use. Um, and I, I think we've been through this, so I don't want to belabor it any further, but of course we'll be back before this board, uh, for, uh, approval of an additional use. And, and if Adam, if I can assist Adam in any way in artfully crafting that condition, I'd, I'd certainly be happy to do so. Or Mr. Bernie.
I just want to make one important point that this was always, um, what we submitted and intended. The plans have always showed a twenty nine hundred square foot dispensary. The four plans that show the interior of the building have always shown that a portion of it would not be included in the dispensary. Um, I believe it's in the applications and narrative that came in with the permit as well. So this is not something that we, you know, devised after coming here. It's always been the intention and maybe that just wasn't communicated well enough up until, until this point. Um, but it has been in the well enough up until, until this point. But it has been in the documentation that we submitted at the original application stage.
I think from a lot of residents' perspective, when you come to the select board to negotiate the host community agreement, they've always seen the property as one unified use. And it wasn't disclosed, nor does it necessarily required to be at that time. And I can understand the residents' feeling that this feels like something completely different, even if it had been the intention from the applicant's origin. And, you know, it's, it's one of those fun permitting things that we, we all run into and deal with.
And through the chair, so it, it wasn't until we got to the nuts and bolts of engineering and, you know, and whatnot, which typically happens after the host community agreement, because you don't want to spend the kind of money they've had to spend to put this project together like this, until after you get the HCA. And that's why what we're doing now, we always had contemplated eliminating that residential use. And we're only proposing to have, you know, this one cannabis use there right now. So it really is largely what we had, but it wasn't until we got through engineering and architecture. And, you know, there was the setback issues that we had to resolve, that we really came up with this absolutely formal and hopefully finished site design. And that's why it's sort of being presented like this. Because originally, yes, of course, our goal was, look, this property works. It's, it's on a great street, great town, let's do this. And we went to the, the board with that for our HCA. Then once we got that, then we dug in. And that's why we have this, this full plan now.
Good. Yeah. No, no. And please don't misunderstand, it wasn't an accusation at all. It's just, and, and I feel the same way as the, 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 the comment. I'm a member of the public as well, and I had not foreseen this use. And this is, this public hearing is the first time that any of this stuff has been available necessarily. Right, exactly, exactly. Yes, thank you. And to, to speak to that previous speaker, I, I also share the concerns. And, and I think that, I think that I'm not alone. And, and it certainly, certainly bears looking into.
Mr. Ellison, would you mind elaborating on some of what your concerns are? Because I, I think we come at this from different angles, and I see a mixed use as a big win, but I'd love to hear more of your thoughts on it and educate me, if you're willing.
Well, my thoughts, my thoughts primarily are based on the, the long and arduous process that got us to get to making these regulations. These regulations have been forced down our throat by the state. We had no choice in the matter. We had, we had an election, we had a, we had a. Give me the right terms, please.
We, there was a referendum in 2016 to permit the sale and creation of industry of adult-use cannabis. Upon that, there was a accelerated timeline for development of regulations and a fair amount of mandate in the nature and manner in which the town went about developing and, and adopting those that put some significant strain on the discussion between opposing parties. And, and that caused some significant fear here in town specifically, between, you know, the board and, and those who were positioned on either side of, of the regulatory scheme. I don't know that that's any of the, the, you know, the current industry's fault or issue, but it was something that we dealt with locally, and I'm sure we're not the only community who had those types of, of experiences. Is that more or less where you were?
Yes, it was. But actually, specifically, I wanted to get to the yes versus no votes.
The referendums.
Right. So we were a yes town.
We were. And then the regulations to prohibit were significantly, significantly larger quantum than if we had been a no community.
Not only that, it was quite bumbled, the process internally in town. It was very bumbled. So.
Oh, you're talking about the, the election that didn't happen and, yeah, whatever.
Yeah. So this is a whole bunch of laundry that we're kind of going through, but we've got new members, so they kind of need to hear.
So, so through the chair, I was a co-author of that ballot initiative in 2016. So was, was a, a big part of this whole process. Then the legislator, legislature came and sort of rewrote our ballot initiative some. But part of the reason why it gets bumpy on the local level after the vote is because in 2016's a presidential election, everybody shows up, right? But then later on, when you have hearings that are the nitty gritty of this, a lot of people aren't paying attention, and it's more, and so then it gets bumpy and a little more controversial, and you get, and the, than the opponents are a little more vocal. And that's sort of why, and I've seen this in countless towns over the years, is, you know, that same, that same process. And then you added to that, you had the Attorney General, like scaring all the towns, if you don't implement zoning right away, you're going to get a marijuana retailer across the street from your elementary school, and it's going to be reef for madness. So we had a lot of that i- issue too. And towns were sort of forced into, where you always had a protection. You had this 500-foot setback from schools, you have the host community agreement protection, but towns just didn't weren't aware of all the protections that you would have had under the base law. So people scrambled to get these bylaws written. So anyway, I had to to fill in a little more color on Mr. Bernie's, you know, description of what happened.
Sure. No, I think you might have misunderstood, or maybe I misspoke because of my missing tooth, but it wasn't a bump, it was a bumble. A bumble in town, an internal bumble. We, there had been decisions made and, and paths chosen, and nobody took credit for the fact that none of it happened. So there's, there's that added to this tension that's in town. I'm certainly not trying to be political and run for reelection to this position. So I'm primarily focused on the concern between the opposing views in town. That's, that's basically it.
So I suppose what I'm trying to narrow in on a bit, because I, I understand the, through some, through previous conversations, some of the challenging nature in the town about all of the marijuana-related things. I, I feel like I'm hearing concerns specifically about this being a potentially mixed-use development. And I thought you were going in that direction as well. If you were not, I apologize, I misunderstood. I was trying to really pinpoint what the concern was specifically with that aspect of, well, we haven't seen it, but we have, or is there more to it?
Yes, yes. Simply interest is yes. My statement was that this would be an ideal spot for mixed use, right?
Yep.
And, and, and I don't, I, I think that it still would be. However, we're limited to two retail distribution.
Two retail establishments.
And there's no other limits on any of the other establishments.
That's correct.
So they could permit a retail distribution center here, and then they could permit a testing facility there, and then they could permit something else, marijuana.
Well, they couldn't establish a testing facility. It's only permitted in the office park.
They could permit two other marijuana uses.
No, they couldn't.
No?
Cultivation, I think, what? No, I don't think any of the other, maybe a transporter.
Okay.
I think the remaining marijuana establishments, as defined under the general laws, require the location in yeah, the Office Park Industrial.
Oh, well, that kind of assuages a little bit of my concern. I'm glad you asked.
I'm glad you used the word assuage. I got told that was too fancy a word for me to use.
Yeah, people compliment me on my two cents vocabulary all the time.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I just have one more quick comment, and that is I'd like to take another look at the site plan relative to screening. Because I know there are residential uses in this area, and I don't know how much screening they've incorporated to hopefully screen this use from any of the abutters. And then it, my opinion would be that it would be best to continue this hearing to our next meeting, so we can kind of get a better understanding of things, but so.
Well, I can answer the screening question. So if you look at the site plan to the south, across Summer Street, and to the north, across Youngs Road, I believe that is all commercial, possibly industrial, but mostly commercial properties across from there. So we do not have a ton of screening across the street, but we do have over near the brook, which is the direction of where the closest residential properties would be. This entire area in here between the brook and the parking lot is all vegetated. We are planting a significant amount of shrubbery and bushes at the request of the State Environmental Protection Department. And so there will be, you know, better screening than there is right now. But there will be screening all along the eastern side of the property. And I, I believe on the other side of the brook, there's also screening over here as well.
Okay. The lot that's across the street, the 17 Youngs Road, is that a residence? I don't know if there's a house there. I know tri-town land.
No, if you, if you're looking at, if you're looking at map 115, lot 15, 17 Youngs Road to the north, that's actually a large undeveloped, mostly wetland parcel. It's vacant.
Okay.
It's actually the same owner that owns the portion of the property where the brook is on.
Okay.
Sorry, the GIS is down. I was trying to pull it up.
Through the chair, I mean, we are going to be improving the, the visual characteristics of the property as well. So not sure, beyond any other commercial use right now, it's a tavern, what additional screening adds or removes from the application. It's not like we're going to have cannabis growing outside or any onsite consumption or anything. It's a commercial use, which is where we're significantly improving the property. And as Ian mentioned, from the one residential property that's, you know, over 250 feet away, there will be some screening by the brook as well. So so I think we satisfy the concerns, but also we're improving it. So anybody who is seeing it will, it will look better than it does today.
Okay, anything else?
Mr. Chair, I would just add that I'm as my personal note, as my kind of personal thoughts on this, I'm very happy with what I've seen in the plan so far. I think I've wrapped my head around it. I am personally comfortable with this. I know Mr. Cole wants to have more time to look things over. I don't know that I understand what we would want to look over at this point, but, and, and love to hear that as well from Mr. Cole or someone else. If we know what our concern or, or want to see more of is, because then I would want to look in that direction too.
So what I think is my primary concern is how this shapes up relative to the undefined spaces. And I certainly appreciate where the applicant's coming from. And, you know, if this were a traditional commercial building, strip mall, whatever, certainly, you don't always know who the tenant is going to be. And even if you know who the tenant is now, that doesn't ensure that that won't change at some point down the road. I think this particular use demands just a little more scrutiny because of the security issues related to it and so on. And I feel like the applicant's done a good job of addressing that. But at the same time, I think from the planning board's perspective, we just need to make sure we're careful about how this shapes up. We've, we've had numerous other projects that have gone through similar processes and been approved only to find that years down the road, they don't have as much parking and they're in the street. And so we just, I just want to be aware of it. And again, I think the applicant's done a very good job. And, you know, made a very good effort here. But at the same time, this is the first time we're taking a look at these plans, and I've certainly learned a lot this evening based on their description of things. And so that's all.
Yes, thank you. And then there's also the matter of the, this was publicly advertised a month previous, well, previous date and continued because of our lack of members, membership. So just giving the extra, the extra, at least one meeting of, of potential public input, I think is benefit to the community. And, and Adam, if you wouldn't mind, the special permits, there's multiple permits. So the one of us for the
Special permit for non-medical marijuana establishment. There is a special permit for work within the floodplain. And because the majority of the site is within the floodplain, they're required to get that special permit. Historically, the board has looked favorably upon the addition of compensatory storage, which is being provided here. And the final is a site plan approval.
Okay, thank you very much. So it is not just the site plan review. We're also doing
You're doing two special permits, yes.
So that's just, just more reasoning to get, get more eyes on it and, and continue it, at least for one meeting.
And, and I will note that Ms. Moran has been at every single meeting that this has been on the agenda. I've seen her on the Zoom, and she has been following along. So interested parties have been able to
The public comment.
Correct. Have been able to follow the, the process and, you know, have been diligent about ensuring that they're here for the meetings when it's scheduled.
Sure, but she and I both were surprised about these.
And I'm not saying that's not a reason to, that the hearing needs to be closed, but, you know, I, I just note that there was an interested party, and they have been able to continue and follow and, and get their, their voice heard.
Okay. Is there any further discussion for this? Do you have anything else you'd like to add? So I'd like to have you request a continuance to July 11th or July 25th?
July 11th, we, we would request a continuance of the public hearing through the chair, if appropriate.
Perfect. Yeah, thank you very much.
Yeah, absolutely.
Should I prepare a draft decision so that it is at least available if the board chooses to?
Mr. Bernie, if I can assist in any way, of course, I'm available.
So I guess I'd be looking for a motion to continue the public hearing.
I would move to continue the public hearing for 43 Summer Street to the meeting on July 11th at 6:05 PM.
I will second that.
Second. Any further discussion about continuing? Hearing none, all in favor by roll call vote? Mrs. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your patience before this meeting even started.
Absolutely. Thank you to the chair. Thank you, Mr. Bernie. I'll see you guys in a couple of weeks.
Very good. Okay. I'll just give him another moment to clear out. You good? Yeah, I'm good. So, next. Yeah, I'm good. So next item is minutes approval. One for the public hearing and one in general minutes. We not have a separate set of minutes or are they part of this?
Great question. I thought there were two sets.
Did you have them?
Well, I think I have.
Everyone should have them.
Yeah, I think.
You may have just swiped it off the table with something else.
Okay, sure.
The way they were packaged, it couldn't easy to actually pack up with.
Probably, yeah. So the one I was missing was for the public hearing.
Oh, yeah, no, I had. Yeah. Public hearing for four ninety-four electric.
Yeah. So I would go ahead.
I say I would move to approve the minutes for our meeting on six thirteen and for the public hearing on six thirteen for four ninety-four electric cabinet.
I will second.
Good motion. Very good. Any discussion about the motion approval of minutes? Okay, all in favor by roll call vote. Mrs. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
And an eye for myself. They are approved. Do you want those back? So committee reports. Open space ad hoc committee. I believe it's Mr. Cole.
Yes, we met June ninth. And the primary issue we discussed was what's affectionately known as Stump Cove. And we are going to work with the town manager and go over the options to do the title work on that parcel. So that hopefully the ownership can be cleared up and confirm that it is, in fact, town owned property. At which point we can move forward with creating some form of public access to Lake Shirley using that parcel, which would most likely shape up as car top canoe and kayak access. So.
Super. Question on that, the title search. I know that the Chair of Conservation had recently reached out asking about some unknown parcels. Is this deep, this title research, is this something that is uncommon in town? I mean, we've known that it owner unknown forever.
Well, no, I don't think it's uncommon. I think without someone looking to facilitate use on a parcel or build something on a parcel, the expending of funds to do title research is not always front of, of people's minds.
Okay.
Because it's, it can be simple and inexpensive. It can also be wildly complicated and expensive.
Because, because my understanding was that the public access provided to the town was given to the fellow on the wall over there. I don't know how long ago, but.
And, and it very well may have been. That doesn't mean that the town ever received clear title.
I know, but so anyways.
But, yes, I mean, I think, I think as with many communities, there was a lot of, yes, let's do this. Everybody shakes hands. Everybody does this, that, and the other thing. And, you know, fifty years later, no one knows what actually.
Nothing got done. So this is sign up there, I think. Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee is me. We were not able to meet due to June, due to the holiday. They wanted to reschedule to tonight. Obviously, that wasn't going to work. I believe our next scheduled meeting is, oh, I hope it's not two weeks from tonight. We're going to meet soon. Haven't met for a while. The Agricultural Commission, same, same kind of an issue. We have not met twice, two months now in a row due to lack of quorum. However, the farmer's market has begun. We had a third market this past Sunday. As well, the Historical Society is having open office hours, giving tours of the Historical Society. They're having a raffle for a bench. They're selling historical stuff over on, on their lot. We've had varying varying numbers of vendors. We started out eighteen vendors the first week, then we had six on Father's Day weekend. And then we had thirteen vendors yesterday.
What are the hours again?
The new hour, we, we dropped the half an hour again. So the hours are ten A M. to twelve P M.
Oh.
Every Sunday.
But there was no one there when I shut up twelve fifteen.
Well, you weren't, there were, there were a number of people that showed up at twelve and we were feeling bad. However, we are not going to have the public market, the farmer's market this coming Sunday because it's the third before the, the Independence Holiday. So, but every Sunday after that, up until September, mid-September, we will be meeting. So that's it for that. Capital Planning Committee.
Not the time of year to meet.
No meeting. Get used to saying that.
Yep.
Economic Development Committee.
Oh, yeah, I don't order my notice. My bad. Did not meet due to lack of form.
Okay. Seems to be going around. Stone Water Task Force.
Have not met. Couple misfires, but.
Yeah, okay. The latest I heard is rescheduling potential due to the D B W director.
I, I guess that will be up to the committee. Thursday, it's were chosen to avoid conflicts with the committees that all of the members sit on. So.
And most of those members are no longer members of that committee anymore. So.
But, well, I mean, you have Mondays with planning, you have Wednesdays with conservation, you have Tuesdays with select board. So you're.
Was it, no, is it back to three or is it up to five?
It's five and it had been, it had been scheduled for the third Thursday to keep consistency. So if we start moving to a Monday or Wednesday or a Tuesday, then it's negotiating around those other meeting schedules and the consistency can start to go out the window.
But in all honesty, it probably would be a good thing because I, every time I look at the town calendar on that third Thursday, it's got a whole bunch of stuff. So anyways, thank you for the committee report. M R P C.
Haven't met since the last.
And joint transportation, same thing. Okay, very good. Onto directors items.
So we are in receipt of a recommendation to appoint the final member of the Economic Development Committee, which would be the open space representative. And Anna Lockwood has been put forward by the Open Space Committee. So Ms. Lockwood is interested in the position, meets the criteria, and ultimately would be this board's appointment as the Economic Development Committee is and was created by the planning board.
Okay, and as well, open spaces and ad hoc.
Correct.
So do we have a copy of her talent bank?
There is no talent bank as she's being appointed, correct.
Okay. Is there, is there a recommendation from the open space?
I received an email from the chair stating that they collectively nominated her and she accepted. I don't know if Mr. Cole was involved in that meeting or not.
Yeah, I was there and she would like to participate. So.
Okay. Should we look at, make another approval appointment tonight?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, she's not with us, is she? Well, as goes most of these things, there are no requirements, simple eagerness and desire is adequate. And has been involved in the town for a long time. I know, I know, I know, I know Anna. I don't know if anybody else does. She lives on Main Street here at the end, right off the pond. She's been quite active at different periods in, in my experience in town. Mr. Cole, you have anything to say?
I would move that we approve the nomination of Anna Lockwood to the Economic Development Committee as the open space representative.
Excellent.
I would second that.
Moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion about the appointment? Okay, seeing none, all in favor by roll call. Ms. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
And an eye for myself. Thank you, Anna, for stepping forward and thank you, Open Space, for writing the recommendation. Pondview Commons.
Still no movement. I have reached out to the chairs, the new chairs of the various committees that have been discussed about scheduling a meeting to discuss it. Once I have responses, I will bring it to the board and we can talk about what form that looks like, whether it's the chairs having some sort of meeting and discussing, or whether it's looking to have a larger forum that is essentially a posted meeting for all of those groups to, to have a discussion on that stretch of Chase Road from Mass Ave to West Townsend Road and what the implications for zoning infrastructure, et cetera, are.
Very good. Thank you. So meeting schedules X P M. All board meetings are held at Town Hall unless otherwise indicated. We've got July eleventh and twenty fifth. We have Fallula Road hearing continuation and we continue two other public hearings. So we have on, on the docket, three public hearings.
Correct.
For the July eleventh.
One is essentially a mop up with the A and R. One is a continuation and then Fallula will be a continuation.
Yep. Okay. So you're up to ongoing items.
Just by way of update, we did receive the grant for the zoning for the MBTA communities. The M R P C is in the process of finalizing their paperwork with the state in order to begin that work with us. Again, my Pondview Commons update covered the other two ongoing items.
Super. All right. So now we're up to public comment.
I've got nothing on the machine.
Well, Lynn is still with us.
She's still with us, but she's muted. I believe she's had her piece.
Okay, very good. If you do have something to say, Linda, speak up so we don't miss it. Board comments or concerns?
Mr. Sheriff and Matt.
Yes, please.
I, I don't know if we are already kind of aligned on this or not. But after the discussion tonight about the share, the, the com, one second, I apologize. There we go. Let's try that again. After our discussion about the common driveways, whether or not the language of the law ends up being clear to the building commissioner or in any legalese, the amount of difficult discussions we have to have with people coming to the board about common driveways tells me that we need to improve that wording regardless, even if it works. So I just wanted to put forward that I would support us and would love to see us tighten that up. I don't know that that would actually be that big a lift for us time wise, but I think it wouldn't be hard to make something more clear than we have now.
Agreed. Agreed. What do you think? Do you think you could have something together on for the twenty fifth? Like, just as a general discussion, like, give us what we've currently got, what it's.
Yeah, I mean, I think what I would probably do is seek out examples from other communities.
Okay.
And let the board look at them and see if these are things they think they would like to implement. I mean, I don't, I could go and I could write something, but I feel like a lot of times when we take that route, it's colored through my lens and the board kind of says, okay, well, why'd you do this and why'd you do that? And, and you all have different opinions and you're the ones who put it forward. So, I mean, I would probably select a few that are varying as far as permissibility and specificity. And we can discuss what you like or don't like, and then we can craft something.
It would be good.
I mean, I don't see any reason we couldn't make it to a special. I know Mr. Cole isn't a big fan of zoning at specials. And I know, you know, depending on what the board's putting forward, that can be something that, that can be problematic and where this is not an emergency and isn't having something holding over us, we could, we could look at that.
Agreed. So you want to put that on for the twenty fifth rather than, rather than the eleventh? Give you some time and give us a little more space on the hearings. I do have a board. Mr. Cole, do you have anything?
No, I do not. Thank you.
Okay, I just want to make mention that the, the Select Board has reorganized and the new chair has added a new item on the agenda. It's board comment. My understanding and forgive me if I've misspoken, but my understanding is that now the Select Board are going to have public comment and board comment to the Select Board is my understanding of it. I don't know if anybody knows, is aware.
I believe that's what it is.
Okay. But, so the reason I brought that up was that it, it seems, it seems with that to be taken avail of, then a meeting of the chairs might be less important because the chairs could collectively decide to go to a Select Board meeting and have input.
Sure, I, I think that's, I guess reasonably.
A possibility.
A possibility. And I guess where I'll rewind. I think my understanding, and, and this is just from having watched a few of their meetings and read the email that went around to the various boards. The intent of that is to increase or to de-stigmatize communication between boards and, and the Select Board, which is kind of an odd distinction, but that's, you know, to make it less formal for, for members or chairs of, of individual board to go and speak to them. Sort of what I, I think what I was talking about is specific to this one topic. And I think having a meeting dedicated to just that offers a wider opportunity to have discussions. And I, I think, again, if you just have the chairs, you limit the input because it's an individual. But if you invite all the boards, you get into, you know, thirty-five people at a meeting where everybody is in session and there's minutes that are kept in. So both have advantages and disadvantages. And I don't know if, I don't know what the, the best way to do it is. I don't know if the chair's meeting to start it and sort of lay some groundwork and ground rules and then have a follow-up that involves everybody makes sense. Again, I, the water district so far is, is who's indicated that they're interested. The previous sewer chair had indicated that they would be interested. I, I expect that the current sewer chair would also be interested. We have a new DBW director, so I expect that, that he probably has some different ideas that would be, would be valid in there. So we'll, and I believe the Conservation Commission would be interested. I know their chair has expressed interest in that previously.
Very good. Very good. So unless there's anything else from anyone with us, I would accept a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
I'll second that. I'll second that.
Do we need a time on that?
No, but I saw Mr. Cole unmuted himself. Was it just the vote?
Correct.
Okay, no discussion on the journey. So, that being said, all in favor of adjourning by roll call vote, Mrs. Reed.
Aye.
Mr. Brenner.
Aye.
Mr. Cole.
Aye.
And an I for myself. Thank you very much for a productive meeting.
Thank you. Good night.
Wish you well.